I can't hear you.
I was doing the attendance, I didn't think I had to shout it. I just went around and said Sarah was here, I was here, and Scott was here, and Kathy was here, and you were here.
Sounds good.
And our new member who hasn't been sworn yet, but he will be shortly, Jason Bagley, is here.
Is there a problem with Jason doesn't sit at the table?
No, he can sit at the table now. He'd be part of the discussion, sure.
Welcome.
Karen was coming as I was coming, so could have been.
Jason, how do you spell your last name?
B A B L Y.
Just like it sounds, okay, good.
We have a spectator. I'll try to get him this too.
All got soaked in wet?
So we have minutes from our last meeting. Sure, I'll second it. All in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? There they are. And now we're going to go to public comment and make my first... Oh, well, that was going to be my public comment. That we should take a moment and reflect on Larry Seabird's service, years of service to the town and to this board and to the Conservation Commission and everything else he did, so, you know, he'll be sorely missed. Obviously, we need more citizens like him.
He would have been very pleased to have seen the paving over there for the parking lot and the one over there by the fire department because he's been after that for quite a while to be done.
Well, I hope that... You spoke of a plaque or something.
Yes.
That goes at the falls.
That's what... I was talking to Julie about it earlier, and we don't know if they're going to wow it at the falls because there's so much other stuff going on there, but that would be the most ideal place.
He was really...
Really into it.
The driving force of everything up there, so I hope that will work out.
And also planting a lot of the trees after they got the trees and all set in, typical, nobody ever shows up, so he wound up doing three-quarters of the work. There's other things that he's done in town, too, that helping out people and things like that, that... Anyway, it was just so sudden and shocking what had happened, so anyhow. He was a nice guy. He used to run into the town offices barefoot up until it got to be cold. I mean, come running up here, running there with us, you know, and we were always, the girls and I were always kidding him because he didn't have any shoes on his feet.
No shirt, no shoes, no service. Luckily, they weren't serving food. So my next is about the select meeting this evening, this afternoon. It's not on our agenda, but there was a discussion of the septic regs and an alternate formula for commercial and large residential. But we did not put in the large residential. And I had, I couldn't remember why. I mean, the state reg allows it both ways, but we didn't put it in, so I'd like to have that discussion so we can figure out...
You mean, when you say we, we planning board members didn't put it in our zoning ordinance, is that what you...
Yeah, it's gone through, it was approved.
This is to allow, to sort of lower the septic?
Yes, the density.
Which sort of ties into the PDI work.
Actually, I... Betsy had emailed me this, what you just sent out, and I spent a little bit of time going back to the site-specific soil mapping publication. And what's in it is sort of a model ordinance, and part of that model ordinance is saying that if you have a house that has only one or two bedrooms, then you can have a... Your minimum lot size can be reduced. And if you then have more than three bed... Four bedrooms, I think it is, then your lot size would have to be increased.
Could I just ask that we proceed with the PDI report since we have Jack here and his time is, I'm sure, very valuable? Would that be okay that we...
Finally.
...around a bit?
Moving along now. So I've made the comment, we don't have to decide anything, but it's in there, and I will do the PDI report.
You ready for it?
Okay. Move the paperwork, please.
I know, I know. First of all, I want to thank you for coming out tonight. Betsy's knowledge, we were, I knew that I was probably, wasn't a lot on the agenda, so I appreciate you having here. I'll just pass it on. And I also would like to recognize Betsy. Betsy has been a wonderful player as far as her role on the Housing Coalition Board, and she's been dynamite in this whole process that we've gone forward with this PDI report. This is the final report. And what I'd like to do is give you the why and how this whole thing came about. And I'm going to read it because I don't have the memory bank that I used to have, so it's easier for me to quickly read the words rather than try to memorize them and not be as clear as I should be. The why and how. The Board of the Mount Washington Valley Economic Council met in conjunction with representatives of a number of local partners in May of 2012 to consider long-term strategies, being five, three to five years. The retreat participants identified six key strategic objectives to be pursued over this period. The participants also identified a number of key factors in the economic environment affecting and providing context to be taken to obtain the objectives. The factors included a shifting demographic pattern in the region toward an increasing population of older and retirees and a loss of younger people, a perceived lack of diversity in the regional economy, for example, a heavy concentration of tourism and retail-related businesses, continually rising health care costs constraining business owners seeking to offer good benefits to employees, an increasing number of remotely owned businesses, a perceived need to improve the working skills of the labor force, local labor force, and lastly, infrastructure needs in the region related to transportation, electricity, and telecommunications. At the same time of this retreat that the council was having, the Mount Washington Valley Housing Coalition had examined the demographic, economic, and housing statistics as described in the Housing Matters in the Mount Washington Valley Report, which was published in 2012, and I'm sure you had passed that out at some point in time here. In reviewing the above information, the Mount Washington Valley Economic Council, Chamber of Commerce, and the Housing Coalition formed the Mount Washington Valley Regional Collaborative, a partnership focused on improving economic growth, sustainable development, and quality of life in the Mount Washington Valley, working families, and retiring seniors. In 2013, the Mount Washington Valley Partnership represented its attentive planning and select board meetings to inform regional leaders about the reality of the current conditions and survey and interview industry, community, and municipal leaders to assess the regional business climate. Additionally, the partnership hosted community forums to find out what participants thought were the biggest obstacles to growing the economy and providing diversity of housing options. It was a high level agreement among the following challenges, which were for recruiting and retaining the skilled workforce, transportation issues, economic diversity, and land use regulations. The partnership appreciated the feedback and developed a plan of action to bring together and address and address the identified regional priorities. The following actions were executed to address concerns about land regulation. The partnership recruited a regional advisory council with representation across jurisdictions and sectors to, among other things, work with consultants. In March 2014, the partnership commissioned a consulting firm from Portland, Maine, Planning Decisions, Inc. Planning Decision, Inc. was met with the Roundtable Advisory Council on three different occasions, visited communities, worked with town reps and staff to develop an understanding of the culture of each community, analyzed existing related regulations, and developed recommendations for each town. Steering Committee and Roundtable members had several opportunities for input and comment. The report was finalized in September of 2015. It speaks only to those regulations that impact the cost of commercial and residential development. Roundtable and Steering Committee members do not necessarily agree with every recommendation contained in the report, but all agree this report provides a framework for discussion and our opportunity to utilize zoning ordinances as a tool that encourages technical growth, individual towns' desire, and the region's need to sustain the economy and housing, workforce, and retirees. So on page 43 of that final report is the town of Jackson. And this was never a report that was going to tell the different towns what they should do. This was merely a gathering of information of the townships of the Mount Washington Valley to help with some ideas, some ways you might develop different ways of doing it, and looking at what other towns were doing. It was purely, it was purely a resource.
Jack, do you mind if I add a short little bit? One thing, in terms of that changing demographic, I don't know if you heard it, but there was a presentation at state level, maybe a month, a month and a half ago, that I heard online. And one of the presentations was about the aging of New Hampshire. Correct me if I'm wrong, but New Hampshire is one of the oldest states in the country. The valley is one of the oldest parts of New Hampshire, and I do know that Jackson's the oldest town in the valley. Carol County is the oldest, is the oldest county in the state. And New Hampshire also is one of the oldest states. So we are at the, you know... But the point the presenter made was that it's not really caused by, you know, an influx of older people. The reason that this is happening, in part, generally speaking, is because in the '70s there was a sharp drop in number of children and a sharp increase in age, which couples had children, which caused sort of a gap in that young American stream, so to speak. And we're sort of experiencing that gap now nationwide. And the presenter also thought that we're likely to see a similar effect from recession. But anyways, so, you know, that's part of it. I think the other part is what this report really addresses is that we also aren't keeping the young people that we do have in the state, and we're not attracting young people to the state. And primarily, the reason for that is we don't have good jobs, and we don't have affordable housing, which sort of lands us in this chicken and egg dilemma where, you know, to have good jobs, jobs beyond hospitality, service, retail, you know, career-type jobs, you need affordable housing. But to have affordable housing beyond just workforce housing, the type of home that a family would purchase, a young family, you need to have good jobs. And so, as I said, you have this chicken and egg dilemma. So the PDI report is sort of looking at both sides of that coin and providing tools, you know, that we might use to break that cycle, I guess would be...
And to add to that, I did a report the other, at the Roundtable the other day. There were 763 jobs that were not filled in Carroll County, not just in Mount Washington Valley, but there were 763 jobs that were not filled in Carroll County. A lot of those jobs were better-paying jobs than what a lot of people are making. I can give you, I'll give you the report of the board meeting here. There's a lack... We're running into a situation where supply and demand has, has had an impact on housing much. It's not just, it's not just the housing ordinances, it's the square foot costs that housing is creating because in the, in the numbers that I gave, I think there were 128 construction job types that weren't filled in Carroll County. And those types were the trades, plumbing, electricians, and so on and so forth. So the people that are here are limited in abilities as far as there's not a lot of competition, which drives costs. Competition, without competition, there's no way to measure the cost. So I, I know for a fact that construction costs in the Mount Washington Valley compared to the southern part of the state is at least $10 to $15 a square foot commercial difference, which, when you're building some commercial buildings that you want to have employees on and stuff, and have businesses move here that are not necessarily in the retail service business, you run into that issue. But not only that, but on the housing side, housing costs, per square foot costs are higher up here than they are down there. So we have to be, we have to be smarter, and as Scott said, in order to have people move here, they have to have a place to live. And if they can't find housing, they're not, they can't count. And right now, I think...
And I think they also need to be able to have a job where they can afford the type of housing they want.
Right.
And though construction may pay fairly well, I don't see that as a type of job that's going to attract a fam, you know, young family.
No, it's, it's not. And again, I share that report with everybody because it really zeroes in on the number of jobs that are, that were not filled, that were 10, that were $20, $30, $40 an hour jobs. But again, there's no place to live. And, and what I'm seeing in my neighborhood where we lived for 36 years, what's happened is that the families that are moved in, or the houses that have been sold and turned over, have become vacation homes. And so, and then the vacation homes are now becoming Airbnbs. And so, when, as soon as a house goes on the market in the area and it's under 200, it's $200,000 or under, it's being bought by people that have no intention of having it as a residential home, it's more of a vacation opportunity.
But you can't stop that. You can't...
No, you can't. There's nothing you can do. But that's what I'm saying, we need to be smarter in how we can build things that multiple housing types of things that people can afford to...
I'm not sure too many people want multiple housing. I mean, where you live, you know, like apartments and condominiums and that kind of stuff. I mean, I know we went through that condominium craze here in the late '70s, early '80s, and it went, you know, most of those are second homeowners. And you can't say, you know, you can't, you can't say, second homeowners can't buy them.
No, 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 you can't.
Yeah. And so I think that that's, you're at a dilemma here. Also, the banks aren't lending money either to someone who wants to buy a house.
But again, I think, you know, that to me sounds more like workforce housing, which there's a need for that as well. But I think that the crucial need is affordable housing, families can buy, and condos and that typically. And to add to Jack was saying, what I'm seeing, particularly in Jackson, is that, you know, it just, I feel that the community is eroding, where, you know, we have fewer young families in town.
Oh, I agree with you on that one.
Fewer children, our schools, you know, our school is shrinking. You know, how can you work in town and live in town? I tried to be a teacher, you know, live in Jackson. And, you know, our volunteer departments are at risk as, you know, as the town ages. And I think even, you know, phobia paneling, is that the term, a board, like a planning board, you know, filling the board, because we don't have the young people. And those that we do have are all working three jobs and don't have any time to participate in something like this. But even people more our age, retired or close to retired, but also have strong ties to the community, I think the pool of us is shrinking as well as the community, you know, dries up and so has the community, so does, you know, people like us. And, you know, ultimately, it just becomes a, you know, a retirement community or a vacation home community.
Well, when I just heard statistics, there's about 800 and some people that live here full-time, 2,500 people total. That's a lot ratio difference that are just second homeowners here.
So like 80%?
Exactly.
And I think we all like the small town. And I'm not sure that we want a 2,500 full-time resident town. I'm happy with an 800 resident town. But what I'd like to see is, you know, that the people that work in town can be residents of town, the, you know, the people that hold positions like teachers and, you know, town positions can live in town, that we have, you know, that sense of community, that we have families and young children.
Oh, I agree wholeheartedly on that, but it's, where do you buy the house?
It's the makeup of the 800 that I think is, you know, the important thing as opposed to whether it's 600 or 800 or 1,000 or whatever.
Barlet is 80% vacation homeowners as well.
Are they?
Rent, rental or vacation homeowners, yeah.
But they have more space, don't they, more?
Yeah, well, yeah, they have, they have, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're really limited here, and, and there's no so-called land available to be dealing this with. I mean, we're really kind of stuck in a hard place.
You have an elevation issue, too.
Exactly.
One of the things I wanted to ask, and I don't, I don't think I've ever asked this from Betsy, do you, does your zoning allow, you know, the houses that are going up the river, going along the falls, there's some big houses that are there, are those single-family homes or are they multifamily residences?
Right along the falls, they're single-family, but we have, town-wide, we have an ADU accessory housing unit permission.
Where I'm going with this is that those are big homes, would the, would the ordinances allow those to be converted into a multifamily home?
I don't see one, no.
Well, they're not informing.
Well, and...
You mean, they're so close to the river?
And the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think that would affect lots of...
I'm only bringing that up because I'm seeing a big home. And where I live, the old, the older homes, some of them have been converted into two to three apartments that are affordable and, but are part, they don't change the character of the street, they don't change the character or anything, because they've kept their, they haven't expanded, they haven't done anything other than they've done some renovation within, within the structure itself to allow for multi, multi-use, which is not necessarily an ADU, but it's, it allows for some other people. And Barnes being converted into, into a multi, multi, multifamily type of situation. I love, I own an 1808 Country Ascension Cape, so I'm into the older homes, and, and I think they add so much character, and I hate to see any of those being cut down or renovated. You know, I'd rather see them renovated to allow multi-use, but anyway, I just thought, I don't know if the Arizona ordinance will allow that, but those are the types of things that might allow more people to have, to be able to live in Jackson in an old home that's multifamily versus just...
One of the difficulties, you know, taking those three along the river on the west side, if you go north, the middle one sold for $800,000, $1 million, something like that. And to buy that and then on top of that, spend the money to convert it into two or three or four apartments, people aren't going to do that.
No, that's true. And the people that have converted are going to buy it anyway.
Yeah.
I'm just, I guess I'm just saying if, or if someone has a, a big farm up on the hills and stuff that would like to convert it to a multifamily, is that something that the ordinance...
I don't think we'd prevent that at all, would we?
Right, as long as it has the land, and I'm sure there are plenty of houses in town, big houses like ones next to the fall, but instead of being on a small lot that they are, they'd be on a much larger lot. And as long as the soils are sufficient for, for the, you know, multiple units. And I'm sure there are quite a few in, in town, but the question is, looking at the ownership, whether the, whoever owns it would want to do that with their house.
And that's, I mean, we have, we start with so little land, land in Jackson right off the bat, what's not forest land and what's not too steep. But, you know, I mean, there is developed land still, but it's not being developed. And, you know, so we could open up some of the zoning, and I think we ought to consider that, but I'm not convinced that that's going to suddenly increase our amount of development and therefore drive prices down any, because we're not seeing a development.
When you say open up some of the zoning, how, where? I don't...
Well, with, for Route 16? No, I mean, in terms of reducing setback, reducing frontage, you know, road standards, whatever, you know, something that allows a higher density of development or allows the development of a piece of property that we currently wouldn't allow because it has a budget issue or, you know, that type of thing.
But then you open up the whole can of worms again, is whoever has that property, they're not going to let it go for cheap. And so you're talking...
Well, it's, it's just, it's a matter of economics. If there's more development, that means there's more property, which means that land prices will go down. I'm not convinced that it's going to make enough of a, that there'll ever be enough of an effect to allow affordable housing that we would really like to get to.
We do have the workforce housing ordinance. Are there ways we could liberalize that a little bit?
Maybe. I'm just, my concern is that, you know, land in Jackson is just too valuable, no matter what we do, to ever actually end up with a, you know, $180,000, nice, you know, 1,500 square foot home.
Exactly.
And developers are going to spend that much money for the land and put up a small home or multi-use when they can get, put the same effort into it and get a much bigger price.
I know we've discussed the land here, you know, 33 acres, most of it not developable with...
Okay, hang on a minute. You're getting into specifics of something that I don't think we're going to sort out. I mean, we've all got...
But I was just wondering if it...
We've all got our ideas on how this might work, but we've all seen the reality of how it doesn't work. And part of it is the economics. I mean, who, which developer is going to give up land for an affordable house when they can put in... Okay. Maybe if we were to, we, in the future, if there's multi-unit development, we can say, okay, you can have four extra units on this if you make them affordable housing. Now, that would give us something, you know, an incentive, but just to say, okay, well, we have this affordable housing ordinance in our regulations and try to get somebody to do it, you can't do it. It's, that's what private land ownership is about, too, is you get to do what you want on your own property. So you're either going to get somebody with an altruistic idea of, you know, development or...
What we have is something like they've just described, right?
Right.
Which I think might work if someone was doing a large development and there was a way to add a few more units to that large development, but we're just not seeing those large developments.
And that's 100%, true. And I didn't want to take up the time to discuss that kind of stuff because that's your job, but that, the PDI report just points out some land use regulations in commercial development and residential development that if you hadn't thought of it, it might be something that you might think of, see how other towns might have done it, addressed some of the same issues, because Jackson isn't the only town dealing with those issues. Jackson is a nice town, it's a very desirable town if you will deliver it, and the people that can afford it in the town basically aren't worried about affordable housing.
Well, except that-
Young people.
I didn't raise that, I'm worried about affordable housing in the sense that I'm worried about-
Well, I'm only saying if people can afford the house, I'm worried about how much it costs.
Well, the thing I brought up on the public comment was about a specific property where the owner has an apartment. And, but in order to have it put in, he had to say that the house was a one-bedroom house. Now, it used to be a three-bedroom house. So the bedrooms didn't go wet, I mean, you just called them the library or the sewing room or whatever. But if we can work out the words on the septic density and that, we can't be less stringent than the state, but we don't have to be more stringent than the state. So that's why my question was going to be, what was our intent of leaving out residential when we put in, it was not a disclaimer, but an alternative formula for commercial? And it's, the state accepts it as residential, so, you know, I'd like to have that discussion this evening.
Isn't that fact one of the specific recommendations, or not that you know everyone?
Yeah, I know, but it is. I think one of the specific recommendations for Jackson is if a property's on town, a lot of town sewer, then why not have the septic?
Right, or a community. Well, there's a number of ways to get that and also, I think, on this one, if they put in, if they had the design for a rebuild of the septic system for the current parameters, they don't have to build it until that system fails, the existing. And a very good chance it won't. They're not loading it up particularly, and they're just trying to get a sale of a house that used to be a three-bedroom house and had to get designated a one-bedroom house, which I'm not sure how that happened, but it did. And now to sell it, they really need it to be a two-bedroom house.
Right, because the banks won't touch it, I imagine.
Right.
But I think he failed to re-say, if I remember correctly, he's got two septics on that property.
Two tanks, one leach field.
Oh, he had two tanks, one leach.
But anyway, so it was a, it's gonna work.
Big mess.
It, it's one of those places where we can help with this idea of properties getting the ability to put in an apartment and affordable or not. I mean, if we want it, we have to help it along.
And that's all, I think, that everybody's looking at, is how can we, how can we do something ruining the character, upsetting the other people that live here, not just here, but in the Mount Washington Valley, and, and be able to be, to increase a younger population to be able to live here, have better jobs and so on, so forth. And that's what we're all here to do.
Well, one of the things, if you would like to look into this, I've been saying this for thirty years now, is if we, the Mount Washington Valley became an extension of UNH, not just the community colleges and everything else, then we'd have professors, teachers, we have all these mountains and forests and everything else that is part of UNH, it's right here in our own backyard. And we have, it'd be young people, professional people coming up to live here, and it would help fill up the valley with young people. And I don't know how to go about doing it, but somebody needs to do it.
Well, and mo- and most importantly, it would bring young people here for years-
Exactly.
Who would then want to stay here if they could.
Yeah, you look at places like Hanover-
I mean, you have to look at, you have to look at those kind of, you know, reasoning to beat them up here rather than tourism.
Yeah. And a quick, a quick response to, so that you know what you were dealing with, the university system is made up of four colleges. So it's not a matter of UNH deciding to, to bring a campus up here. The university system, the chancellor, while I do the point that you already have Grand State College, which is part of the university system and has a campus and is providing education, what we don't have is master programs that, and for anyone to, to increase their education in a, in a master's field, they have to go to Plymouth or they have to go down to UNH. And the problem, what we continually have, is the professors that are teaching those classes don't want them up here to teach.
But again, I, you know, nothing against Grant State, you know, it's great that Grant State is here, but it doesn't do the role.
Exactly, it doesn't have that terminology.
Because you don't have students coming in-
Yep.
-to live here-
Yep.
-to go to Grand State.
Yeah.
If, if it could ever happen in northern UNH campus, and it would be the most popular of all, and a great street to have.
If you're gonna do anything, it's not gonna be a UNH thing, you're gonna go to a college that wants to move to the area.
Well, whatever, I don't care which one it is, but that needs to-
I think that that's what, that's what the focus needs to be.
Imagine, you know, like that kind of library.
Oh, it'd be unbelievable.
Yes, but where would it go?
I don't care where it is, someplace in the valley.
We have A U H, there's a land at the deck, we can put it there with dormitories and everything else.
Perfect.
But I think that's the thing, I think we can't, we gotta get unfocused on UNH and, and if there's an opportunity for a college that wants to expand and have a, a campus, then that's the type of thing that we need to look at.
Like an exploratory committee.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how to go about doing it, but I, like I've been saying since we moved up here, this is what the valley needs really badly. And then it just spills on over into the towns and everything else and you get life back again.
Ripple effects.
Yes.
If there's any silver bullet to what we're all talking about, that's, that's the closest.
And there's unintended consequences with that too, that you don't see, so.
Well, with anything that you do.
Absolutely.
But it, it helps the economy, it helps jobs being better-paying jobs, that then can afford to buy houses and send their kids to school, and like you said, one to live here for the rest of their lives.
And I can't think of a single college town that I've been to, been through, that I would say, wow, that college really brought that town down. Oh, I don't, you know, if you're looking at Hanover, if you're looking at Dover, Durham, if you're looking at Burlington, you know.
Brunswick, Maine, for heaven's sakes, you know, Main Street is wonderful.
It's not a hundred percent positive for everybody, but I think in general, they tend to be-
No, I agree.
Our zoning ordinance says that we allow non-proprietary educational facilities for preschool-age children. Maybe we should just scratch out the preschool-age children.
The pre-
Cross our fingers that-
School children.
Yeah, that somebody might take over Black Mountain or something like that here. We're certainly not encouraging it right now with that wording.
And, and according to, according to the state, there's, there's an RSA in the state that educational, governmental educational facilities are not bound by the ordinances of any town.
I wonder if people really know that, they must, I guess, in that field.
Oh, we're gonna have a bunch of schools, sure.
Just so you know. University campus. Just so you know. So anyway, I, again, I thank you very, very much and can't thank Betsy enough for all the work that she does on the Housing Coalition.
Thanks.
She's one of those super citizens that I'm very proud of. And thank you for letting me come in.
Well, it's a thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you. It's a difficult community to try to get more workforce housing in, it's, you know, we've got so many steep slopes and expensive land and so on. Any kind of guidance or ideas, whatever?
And, and some anti-sentiment. We sent out a questionnaire for our master plan, and at the end of it, you could write in comments, and most of the comments, I remember, were about affordable housing. And those comments were pretty evenly split between, we desperately need it, or it's the last one. And there's, there's a large portion of Jackson that would be happy to throw a gate up on the covered bridge.
I'm sure that we're just like, freedom doesn't wanna have any commercial role, you know, they, they don't want anything, they happily do it as is. This population in the school has gone from a hundred something down to sixty-five or something.
It never stays the way it is.
No, it's always up and down.
But I mean, it just is. You can't keep things. Nothing stays the same forever. You know, if you're not willing to-
Change is inevitable.
Evolve with it and keep the important stuff, you'll lose. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
And I hope the rest of your summer is, is good and enjoyable.
Thank you very much, Jack. We appreciate it.
Before we get back to everything else, when we approved Nestle Look for changing the condominiums to fourteen of them, I don't know if you bothered to read anything of the brochure that, um, what's his face left here, Robert Seer, but they're all going to be around two-hundred thousand, which is, is not bad for a price for somebody to get a mortgage at. And there's seven or fourteen of them, they're gonna be begging right now before any, if you hurry up and somebody buys them, before the, the second homeowner's come and picked them up.
I think they're converting them from fourteen to seven.
To seven, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, well, there's seven of them that are gonna be around two-hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and I'm looking, not at you, Sarah, but back through there at the village house, what was that, is that an apartment complex back there?
I think it is. I've never been into it, but it used to be apartments behind the village house.
Is that an apartment?
Yes, the back building is a-
As apartments?
I, I don't know if it's two, I think it's two.
Okay, I'm just curious, I never knew what that was. And I, um, my daughter lives over in Bolton Landing and they had property, she's involved in all kinds of things too over there, they had property right on Main Street and they took down this old B and B and decided to make it into, people went to before the planning board, affordable housing is what they said. But they only had to have one unit, affordable housing. The rest of them went for five-hundred thousand dollars. So you can't limit, when you say affordable housing, you can't say that somebody, I mean, you can't do that. Exactly.
Unless, unless you, I've seen it done once on a lottery where they did a whole complex and designated two of the units to be, um, a lower cost. And then you sign on and you can't sell it-
Exactly.
-for more than whatever they had a graduate thing. So you can't take it out of that range.
And that's the same way our ordinance is set up, as I remember it.
Right.
I mean, maybe what needs to happen is there needs to be something like a land trust that picks up property-
Exactly.
-and then works with Habitat for Humanity and-
Yes.
That's, I, again, I question whether Jackson, if Jackson can ever really make-
Exactly.
...development of affordable housing.
I agree with you on that one, yeah. It's necessary, but-
Maybe a way to force it in a way by, I mean, there is property available in Jackson that, you know, there's, there's property that's almost abandoned in some cases, and so if there is a group that would, you know, purchase that property, you know, get grants that they can purchase it, that's something near market value, but then turn it around and make it available in conjunction with, you know, something that might have a tap for humanity. And I don't know how it'd work, you'd need to, you know, whether the sale, you know, when someone, you know, then has the home, whether the sale, like for me and the association, the family association, association that I'm in, if I sell my property, the only value I take out of it is the structural value. The property value goes back into the association. And so as a way of, you know, sort of not having a property, go to someone, you know, in that fashion, and then at some later date gets sold for a million dollars because, you know, that's a very valuable piece of property. A way of kind of keeping it in that sort of circulation, but.
Didn't a long time ago, I could be wrong, that's the reason I'm asking, um, we had a policeman, Gillespie or whatever his name was, didn't we buy that house for him to live, the town did, and he lived in that till he moved? And didn't we do that with one of the schoolteachers as well? I can't remember.
He was a police chief for a while. He was after Woody and before John Moulton.
I mean, didn't we do that, didn't the town have him living in a town house that we-
People are after that.
Oh, right.
Did they? I don't know if that's, I can't remember if that's something, would you know, Sarah?
I thought Woody was the first one.
Too many conversations going on.
I thought we had just the Sheriff's Department.
No, there's a Tribune even out of grammar school.
Okay, then.
And what you were saying, that's right.
I just meant if, if there was something we could, we could do, buy a house, the town could, and only a schoolteacher could live in that, or a principal, or a cop, or something like that, is that something that the town would consider or think about, or?
We could ask them.
Do we wanna say recommend, put out on E-news that there might be an opportunity for people to gather together and brainstorm ideas? Would that be a, an approach?
Well, you've got some ideas already that are in this-
Yeah.
-this document, which I think are fairly well-
But maybe opening it up to people who aren't planning board members.
Well, we have to decide on what our personal, personal, the board's agenda's gonna be, because there's so many things to work on. We have to decide, what are we gonna spend our time in? I didn't mean to cut you off before on discussing this property as a potential housing.
Well, I know we frequently say we're not interested, okay.
I didn't mean to cut you off, but that's kicking a dead horse. We're not gonna decide it here. That is your idea, I've heard at other places and I've heard some very negative things about it.
Exactly.
That that's not with the land, so we're not gonna decide it. So I don't think we should spend a lot of time kicking it around again. We have spent some good moments here talking about that.
No, I totally agree, but I was wondering if we don't wanna maybe propose that it be, you know, out on the E-news and, and get it, get a forum going where some of us might participate in it.
I think the problem was the last time we tried it, it was called Affordable Housing, and everybody came down here in an uproar thinking it was gonna be section eight. So I really don't, I think that's-
But I think clearly defined the difference between affordable housing and workforce housing. Define affordable housing as some-
But is that really anything that we should, I mean, our job is to basically make the rules and regulations for people to come, it's not really our job to tell, it would be something that the town, the selectmen and things like that should be discussing, is that correct?
Well, that's why I think we should do, or I would like to set our parameters-
Focus, yep.
-of what our discussion is, because we are supposed to either be cleaning up our regulations or putting forth new regulations that are helpful to the town. So within that, that's what we should be focused on.
And I agree, I think our ballywick, ballywick is zone regulations. It's our, we may not be convinced that that's going to solve the problem, but I don't see that that means that we shouldn't do what we can. But also having a forum so that we can both gauge, you know, what the feeling is in town , so the town understands, you know, we're gonna start looking at reducing some of our zoning to allow more development, you know, I think we want the town to know why we're looking at that, you know, we're not just trying to make it a city, you know, turn it into North Conway, that, you know, we have some concerns that we're trying to address if we decide to go that route. But I think having, you know, something of a forum that allows people to learn, you know, exposes them to this report, allows them to learn, you know, what we're trying to do.
But this, this report, and I understand all this, that, I mean, it's just not here, it's the aging population all across the country, and it isn't until all those baby boomers drop dead that things are gonna change. And, but meanwhile, you need to make changes for the next generation coming up and, which is a lot smaller than, than big baby boomers are. So just have to put up with the next twenty years, but I, I'm kidding. But this is nothing new, is what most towns, a lot of small towns are facing. And I don't, I mean, to me, we're just about here in Jackson, just about, there's not much more we can do as far as that goes because of the price of housing, the price of land, and trying to get a mortgage is really difficult here. I think you have to look at the broader viewpoint of the Mount Washington Valley, what we can attract here. And that's why I said about the, the college, that's what needs to be addressed. Something that, besides tourism, at five dollars an hour, seven dollars an hour, everybody's still working three jobs and not gonna be able to survive.
Well, and, you know, I, we can also look at not just affordable housing, but there's a lot about economic development here too. You know, some of it is what we've already talked about and what we already have going on, you know, I talked about having, you know, more home-based businesses and that type of thing.
Oh, that's, that's, yes.
I think there is some opportunity for, you know, as I've said before, you know, more professional type- more professional type, you know, whether it's a, you know, a software development company, or, you know, an accountant's office, or a legal office. You know, I think those type of businesses could exist in Jackson.
That's exactly right.
But, you know, again, there needs to be housing, you know, for it not to be just a business that moves from some other part of the valley to Jackson. For there to be new businesses in the valley, there often then needs to be affordable housing for the people that are going to work at those businesses. And, you know, a lot better if they can also go to Jackson, but...
Talking about that with homes, I mean, businesses in Jackson, small businesses, don't we have a thing in our zoning ordinances, you can't have more than three cars at a business? Is that what the...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I thought that was at a home.
For home-based businesses.
That's what I'm, home-based businesses.
It's not the number of cars, it's the number of employees.
Well, three cars, three employees, but, I mean, um...
But three employees.
Get them to park them here in the parking lot.
That's a good idea, yes.
And there are some suggestions in that's, it's on the page nineteen, about economic development possibilities for Jackson, things that would help, and one of them is talking about the home occupations definition as to what's allowed and what's not, and in the discussion in the, I can't remember what it was. I spent a little time just going through this whole thing this afternoon.
What page were you referring us to again?
Nineteen. Nineteen is the recommendations for Jackson, eighteen ninety. About eighteen for affordable housing, and suggestions of how to increase that. And on nineteen is suggestions of how we might encourage economic development. And I think some of these suggestions are food for thought, maybe not taking them exactly as they're being suggested, but to get us thinking as to ways where we could modify our zoning to allow and to encourage maybe more economic development of light industry. They have a way of describing it, that type of business or construction, which is, doesn't give off pollution or bad noises, or have a lot of...
One of the things in there says permit eating establishments in the Village District. I mean, we have eating establishments.
Yeah, restaurants are, yeah, that, that's a...
I mean, one of the problems, too, is, I mean, Larry's shop is really nice here, so unusual, but that's the only shop we have in town. We used to have the Jack Frost shop, and they couldn't stay here because people just weren't coming to buy.
Oh, you've got Cassidy Gallery, and you've got the shops that are in the Snowflake.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but, I mean, it's like attracting businesses, they just don't want to come up. They want to be down there where all the activity is.
There needs to be sort of a critical mass. We've never really achieved that.
Exactly.
You know, we've had businesses that sort of, you know, the J. Town Deli, you know, I think, you know, serves the town, but in terms of attracting people to the town to shop, we've just never had enough shopping to do that. And the ones that do try, because there, you know, there isn't that critical mass, they tend not to survive.
No.
Then the question is, is to where would they be? I mean, we have to be, you can say, yes, we want more, more shops and so on, but where?
Right. What they all talk about, that anchor business.
Exactly.
Well, there's that anchor here that, you know, the other shops can spin off of, say, okay, you're going to draw in five hundred people a day, and by us being next door, we're going to get two hundred of them.
Doesn't happen here, no.
Is that what we want? Is that what Jackson people want?
Oh, right. That's always the other side of it. Okay. The septic thing is kind of tied into this housing, not the economic development, but housing. So where, we were almost into it with your statement, which I'd like you to see if you could revamp.
Okay. To go back to the explanation I was starting in on before, that is, we changed from high intensity soil mapping to the site-specific soil mapping types. And rather than give all of the particulars of how to do that, we just referenced the document, which is their, their publication, number four, anyway. And I went through that publication, and now that I've read through what Bert Phillips was saying, is I realized that when we, when we said do it according to the publication, is that we needed to also say, to have a couple of phrases in there that they had presented as part of their model ordinance. And so that wasn't part of the, the tables for the minimum lot size. And we, what we needed to do is to have a few more paragraphs in, in that, that section of the ordinance to account for houses that are not three bedrooms. And so as, because what they said is that they're, the tables that they had were saying, if you have this particular soil type, then you can have this many units. And, you know, what the minimum lot size would be for a unit in this soil type, and so on. And they had said that if you, that's based on a dwelling of a certain size. And recognizing that dwellings are not all the same size, is that the calculations can be modified for smaller or larger dwellings. And that was not part of the language in the table. It was part of, that needed, something that needed to be added to it. So what Bert's recommending is that we add those statements to our zoning ordinance, which I think we need to do. And then he also mentioned something...
Housekeeping, or would that be continuing?
No, I think we'd have to, to add it the same way that we did the change. We'd have to do it as a zoning amendment for town meeting.
Okay, well, I would say that would be an important project for us. I think we should find those words, get them mailed.
Well, they're right in, they're right in.
Right, and have a...
Publication.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And do the whole thing, and get them, do we have to wait for a town meeting, or can we just do that at a public?
It's zoning ordinance, so we have to do town meeting.
Okay.
But as I understand it, we could propose it now, and it wouldn't be effective until November. It's approximately four months before the March town meeting vote. And then if it went down at town meeting, then of course it wouldn't be effective. But if it passed at town meeting, then whoever, you know, was forced to do something in November that he or she may not have wanted to do, that would be binding from November onward, if that makes any sense.
Well, I think we should work on those words, then, as one of our goals for this next session.
Yeah, I can, I'll put together a draft based on what was in the publications that we say that everyone's supposed to go by.
I was almost going to call you up to come into the meeting this afternoon, because you're what I would call my best source of information on septic.
Well, soil-based. Anyway, I didn't realize that this was going to be a, a selectment thing.
That's good.
So you'll, you'll work up the wording for us for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Great.
We can do that. And I'll email it around to everyone. We need your email address, Jason.
And then I put, I made a note to myself to see if the other selectmen would want to have, and I think they're the ones who should, they, me, they, I'm getting a split person.
Way.
Which side of my...
Me, they.
We, they, have a form on housing, workforce, affordable, you know. I, I don't think we run that. I think the...
No.
Select persons auto.
Okay, great. Yeah, I was just saying, let's toss it out maybe for, to put it out in the E-News and see if there's any interest of, at least bringing it to people's attention. I think people just are not savvy about what's happening. They've seen the notice from the fire department that we need people, but they're not translating that into...
You know, their sign that they put out actually was effective. They got some new people.
Nine new members with our, and I just took in another application tonight.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
I think people will respond if they, if they know what's going on.
Yeah. And the thing with Bob Thompson is very good at the communication thing, because I think he's, through his schoolwork, did some communicating projects, and he would be a good one to have. And especially if we outlined, you know, what we're interested in, and he'd have his input. But I think he would expedite such a thing.
Just keeping the lines of communication open and talking about things.
Right, and just getting more people to realize, yes, we can come in and talk. We can be heard, you know. It doesn't have to just be this old board that keeps meeting, and they all know each other, and they have, you know, this meeting, you know, that, you know, you feel, you feel more a part of it, so.
Can we, the accessory apartment kind of thing, I know that there's somebody in town that has an accessory apartment over their barn or garage, or whatever it is, and it's a professional nurse at the hospital, you know. So it's like, we do, I mean, that's maybe something just accessible, I mean, the accessory, I mean, you're not going to find it on the, on the five hundred thousand dollar on up houses, because they, we're talking about people that live here and need either the extra income, or they see a way of giving somebody a chance to have an affordable place to live. So, anyhow. I'm sorry, Dick, I don't want to be here.
No, no, that's, part of our work is to communicate with each other. Any other ideas? We don't have a master plan review discussion. If we haven't heard from Tara Benford.
Right.
We haven't heard from her, so...
The difficulty is that I emailed her all the material shortly after the meeting, and somehow or other she did not get it, or didn't see it. And she went on vacation, and she got back from vacation last Monday. And you know what it's like when you return from vacation.
And she's behind because she's been on vacation, so, okay.
So I'm sure we'll hear by August, I would assume.
Yeah.
There's one other bit of old news. I think it was at the last, yeah, the last meeting, we had a letter from the Holcomb family who were upset about merged parcel. And I can understand why they were upset. It turned out that back in nineteen ninety-eight, when a deed transferred, it was transferred with the three lots were transferred as one parcel. And then in two thousand and five, it was transferred again, and the lawyer somehow admitted the fact that it had been transferred as one parcel, and he or she labeled them all as three separate parcels. So the two thousand and five thing was the lawyer's mistake, but the nineteen ninety-eight...
Was the intent?
Was stated, it stated that they will, all three parcels will be one parcel. So the people might come to us at some point and ask for a subdivision, but it was legitimately done and not by us.
So how's it stand? I mean, is it still the same, same ownership?
The selectmen, it is in the same ownership. This family owns the three lots that were converted into one lot in nineteen ninety-eight. And the selectman, the selectman's office informed them of that.
At that time?
At, no, this was in a June one letter, when they had appealed to the selectmen and the planning board.
So when they were converted, when the three lots became one lot in ninety-eight, how, why was that?
That was when one owner transferred the land to some other people, and it was worded in the deed that they would become one...
So this has nothing to do with anything the town did?
Exactly, exactly.
Was that registered?
It was registered, yeah. August thirty-one, nineteen ninety-eight. It says the premises herein described above will merge and become one lot of record, together with lot two-two-nine, now owned by the grantees herein. So that was nineteen ninety-eight. And then when it transferred again in two thousand and five, when these people bought it, it appeared that they, they were listed as three separate lots, but that was not true.
And so the people who own it now are the ones that bought it?
In two thousand and five, and thought they bought three lots. But it was the lawyer's mistake.
Yeah, well, that's what due diligence is, you check into things like that. There's no guarantees. I know there are no guarantees with real estate.
Do we know if there's any issue with them applying for a subdivision?
I...
You know, beyond the cost and the time, et cetera?
Yeah.
So now they want to sell some of the lots?
Well, I don't know. They, there's been no further communication since...
If I were you, I'd, you know, if I thought everybody bought two lots and wanted three lots.
Yeah.
It's impossible, just so that, I may not have plans, but...
But at the same time, these are up on Tyrell. I think they're fairly small lots, and it might be something that we wouldn't want to see.
So they're talking about there's the non-conforming lots.
Yeah, exactly. And the only other thing I had made note of is that because Dick was no longer going to be able to be chairperson, we needed to select a new chairperson. You're not allowed to be the chairman?
I think they would rather I wasn't in both places, as...
I think it's part of an RSA.
Yeah. I, I can be the selectman's representative to the planning board, but I'm not supposed to be the chairman of the planning board. But we're also then, if we can get Darren back, he moves up to full-time because we lost John. I'm still here.
It's Darren's turn.
So we're still in need of another...
He needs to be called.
We need, we need more people.
We need more people. That's where it comes down.
Did, did people see what I put in the E-News about it? I hope that we're short and we are looking for new people.
And I would, for the opinion, I would suggest removing the worker qualifications or just doing something to soften that.
We will train.
On the job training.
Yeah.
And Sarah and I were, I was just discussing before the meeting, I was asking, is it possible to have, say, some sort of rotating, whether it be on a six-month basis?
The chairmanship?
Chairmanship.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, speaking for myself, I'd be much more receptive.
Do it for...
If I knew there was a hard date, you know.
And then you do it.
And then, right.
I've got too much to do now.
Well, that's saying this, we get back to that.
I mean, I was in here till like six o'clock tonight, treasury stuff, after the meeting.
Treasurer. Now I'm a selectman, and, you know, people, it's the same people that keep shoving up in all these board meetings.
I don't have the experience you guys all have. So, I mean, you know, Darren even has much more than I do.
We do train on the job.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it was part of what Jack ended up, but I have copies of the how and why that he was reading.
He read.
That he read.
Oh, I'd like to have, that's not in them.
I'd like to have one of them.
And also sort of gives a, I don't know, outline of the report itself, which is...
Thank you. I think she's got one. Do you have one, Sarah?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's yours.
And I had a driveway question. We allow up to two dwelling units on a quote-unquote driveway. And actually, part of that, road standards, I think, might be something we want to look at in terms of allowing development. That seems to be the, the issue that comes up, the motion we look at subdivisions, as to, you know, what kind of road do you have frontage on? Does it qualify? Does it not qualify, et cetera? And, you know, I understand, you know, that we want to, you know, we want to ensure safety and et cetera for people, and there's concern about, you know, driveways that... and et cetera for people and there's concern about, you know, driveways that rescue vehicles can't get up or can't turn around in, but I guess I would say, have we really had a problem? We have plenty of non-conforming driveways and has there really been an issue? And, you know, we had a lot of, you know, it knows only in the 70s and road maintenance, equipment, et cetera, has all improved since. And so, is it really as much an issue as that, as we sort of are afraid of? Is there an issue or is it simply a...
I think what would be useful is if we could look at various places in town as to roads, you know, the, some roads are wider that, use Cameron Drive for an example, is that you've got the roadway and then right-of-way and then there's other developments in town that have roadways, like Grover, which is still dirt. And to get an idea that, okay, in this, this is what a 50-foot road looks like, this is what a 24-foot road or, you know, the different sizes and, and to look at how they're, you know, how useful are they or what's, what are the problems? Is this too small? Is this, you know, excessive? We really...
You know, are we over-engineering?
Exactly.
Kind of getting to that. The question I had was currently we have a, you know, more than two dwelling units on a driveway, whatever a driveway means. But the one sort of exception is if you have a cluster development, you can have a driveway that serves more than two dwelling units within the cluster development. Is that correct? So, does that mean that if there was a cluster development of, you know, say, four units and someone had a lot next to it, that they couldn't use, that there couldn't be a driveway that served both the cluster development and a single unit lot? Is that correct? In other words, does, you know, if the cluster development was a single lot, it was a single dwelling unit, then someone could build, you could have another dwelling unit on a different lot, the driveway would just serve those two, you know, if there's a right way, you know, however it works. But does the cluster development obstruct another lot having a dwelling unit served by the driveway that serves the cluster development even though the cluster development is still a single lot?
I don't know if that serves affordable housing or worker housing, but it still...
Specific question.
Is going to be a good discussion for future development. I mean, that's...
What about the River Lake over there? When they have, you know, that road that goes through and there's a lot of houses off, does that have anything to do with that? I mean, is that comparable to it?
I think that got put in pretty well. One of the problems is once you get beyond two, say you have three family units, they're standing or if they're a cluster or if they're one building, a row house. You want to keep those standards in place so that each family is protected. In other words, you have to have something worded so that everybody has the same protection for life safety and police protection and the whole thing. So, there's that part of it too that we, and I would like to see, you know, yeah, make it a little easier to develop.
And in that sense, I would see a driveway that serves both a cluster development and a single dwelling unit as not being much different than serving two single dwelling units. And I just was curious whether that two dwelling unit really means two lots or does it really mean two dwelling units?
So, that would be, that's a good discussion because that's, actually, we're, there's an excellent discussion because I think we're going to deal with it more and more as the backlots are developed or as people try to develop.
So, we have a situation where someone might get an easement and therefore be able to have a driveway, but if that then prevents the person who's giving the easement to subdivide because they want the driveway to serve whatever lots they create, then the person with the backlot, you know, won't get that easement. But if the person that's giving the easement can do a cluster development instead of subdivision, it's also a benefit, I think, to the town and still offer an easement to the person with the adjacent backlot. That could be a way to do that.
And I was wondering that, as you pointed out, Grover Road is still dirt and I've noticed going down to Tamworth a lot now that Dexter's down there, they have miles and miles of dirt roads that are town plowed. That's bound to be less expensive than trying to asphalt them. I think there's nothing in our road standards that prevents that, or am I wrong?
No. A gravel road is totally acceptable, but there are standards for it.
Why do you suppose they're not put in so much in Jackson? Is there some, are people not aware of it? Is there some way we could promote it more or something? What?
Well, I think in some situations, an asphalt road is going to take less maintenance.
Yeah.
The road up to, you know, especially the road up to my parents' house, it almost needs to be rebuilt annually.
Oh, really?
From my parents' house further up, it actually, you know, it doesn't see the same kind of damage, but...
Well, it's pitch too, is what I, I mean, and the same with, like, off of Black Mountain Road and on the Davises, that road that serves the condominiums up there, if that was a gravel road, it'd be terrible. It'd be nothing but maintenance.
I would say I would change myself to bulldozer. Have all that washing. The last thing I want is that.
Yeah, I was starting with the cameras, the hills, the...
I love dirt roads. I mean, I think that is a little bit the rural character.
I agree, yeah. It absorbs the rain and it's not being bounced off and we're not getting the climate chain from the heat coming down.
Vermont has miles and miles and miles of gravel roads. They're great. You don't go as fast, no.
Right.
You certainly...
Which is not all bad.
No.
And that's, you know, getting back to that over-engineering thing, you know, we always want a road as straight and wide as possible, but what that does is encourage the speed. We found that, you know, narrower, more twisty roads, I think when they, you know, when they built the new Kennedy High School, they purposely made that a Serpentine Road just to, you know, to not encourage speed on it.
That's a good example.
I talked to Bert Phillips one time and he has the same idea, you know, really sometimes under-engineering something can actually end up being a little safer.
Yeah, interesting.
Okay, and we have any further topics this evening?
I think we should elect a chairperson?
Yes, I'd like you to. Or share the chair.
Yeah.
Get T-shirts.
However people want to do that.
Well, I just wanted to, we need to look into that. I need to think about it personally if I were at all in the running. And we're all in the running.
How far do you want to run?
I would suggest that we kind of want to form a committee. I mean...
We are.
Well, even if we get somebody for three months and then at the end of two months, decide who will be doing it the next time or something, I think that's a good idea.
I would suggest that we turn it at the next meeting to at least, I mean, do we know that we can have some sort of rotating, like a less than a year or, I mean, do we know...
What I would suggest is maybe to have a chairman and a vice chairman that just switch places halfway through.
Oh, so why don't you become the chairman then, since you're the vice chairman now?
Well, I'd be willing to, to...
Share it.
Do the share with Scott if he's willing to.
I think this sounds like a proposal.
Like a workable plan.
All in flavor?
Aye. Any opposed? I think that's excellent. Well, having accomplished that, we think about...
I would suggest as a vice chair that we, our first job is to get more members...
Oh, yeah.
Do the outreach.
I'm glad you came aboard.
Yes, welcome.
Happy to have you. And we should get Darren tuned up.
Find out what his commitment is. Because if he, he has missed a lot of meetings.
Yeah.
Because of his work commitments and if...
Well, he was very sick too.
And if that's, you know, going to continue, he may want to consider...
But he did not send a letter to the town.
If he's going to stay with us...
He needs to send a letter because his term was up.
His term was up, so if he wants to...
That's a good point.
Yes, if he hasn't sent a letter to re-up, then that probably means that he doesn't want...
He might have just forgotten about it with whatever was going on in his life, who knows?
But anyway, we need to reach out to him and ask him.
Outreach should be everybody's project. There's no reason we all shouldn't be talking to somebody.
You want to talk to him?
She's the assistant health at Tom, on the town. I know she's got a lot going on. Because she's also on the...
Pre-creation.
I got one too.
Over in Penn.
Yeah. I brought a whole bunch of them in from the bank.
TV panel.
Yep.
At one point, Bill Carey was interested in that. I haven't heard from him lately. I don't know if he's ruled it out. Does anyone know him well enough?
I don't know him at all. I know who he is, yeah.
Well, I'll ask him again.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to stay here?